We'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council this evening. The roll call showed that all members of the council are present and acting instead of our city manager, Wayne Powell, we're pleased to have with us Assistant City Manager, Nicole Cottle. By way of our item over five tonight is our minutes, and we have the Minutes of January
...
Opening Ceremony.
Oh, I skipped right over that. I saw we had no scouts, and so I jumped number four and missed number three, which is our opening ceremony. Councilmember Steve Vincent.
Yes, Mayor. You know, this, of course, this weekend and yesterday, it was the celebration of Martin Luther King, and it's become a weekend of volunteerism and service is what it's really turned into. And I thought it was interesting as the Parks Department was giving their presentation today to see the number of scout projects that have taken place throughout the city and that volunteerism that happens. And, of course, our Cultural Center always has a large number of hours of volunteer work that takes place over there. And I would just encourage us as we look at each of our city departments and as we mean in our strategic plan meeting that we find ways to get our residents involved and volunteer in many more ways in the city to become more invested in the city and feel more a part of what we are doing. So I'd just like to encourage that as well before then if we could stand and do a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. We still have no scouts, so I'll still skip item four, but item five, the approval of our minutes of January eighth. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion there?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for approval of the minutes of January eighth, 2013. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the January eighth minutes, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We come to our comment period tonight, the first part of which is our public comment period. We've had Violeta Albreto sign up to come speak to us.
It's Violeta.
Oh, is this, now is this for the, regarding something specific on the agenda?
It's regarding the ...
Yeah, so we, so if you could hold those thoughts, when we get to that, I'll have you come up and speak. We have you noted, and we'll hear from you shortly. City manager, any comments from you tonight?
No, Mayor.
City council, any comments from you? Okay, we come to item seven, which is our public hearings, and the first one is to accept public input regarding application GPZ 3-2012, which is in relation to ordinance numbers 1304, 1305, and 1311. Did I do that right? All right. So I now open the public hearing regarding GPZ 3-2012. And now, is there anyone here who's come to speak on that? Ms. Albreto, is that the topic that you?
Yes.
Okay, if you could please come up to the microphone. And normally, we have them state, anyone in the public comment period needs to state their address, and Ms. Albreto has already written it in our logs, we already have that, but if anyone comes after her to speak, they would, we would ask that they state their name and address at the beginning.
Mayor, just sorry to interrupt. Typically, don't we have the city manager kind of give us an overview of what the action is?
We do. I'm all out of sorts today. If you can stay there one moment while Ms. Cottle gives us a brief overview of GPZ 3-2012.
I can do that. I know the councils heard this, I'll do that quickly for the, those folks here today. This is a GPZ application for 2711, 2717, and 2737, changing the general plan designation, which is currently mixed use. And then, the current zoning of the property is C2, and the proposed zoning is manufacturing. This would allow for a use that's currently in place, which is a tattoo business.
Okay. Now we'll go to the public comment. It's great to have council members help keep me in line.
Hi. My name is Vavero Verado, and my address is 676 West Rushton Avenue in West Valley. The reason I'm here is, I mean, you already guys, you guys already know, my application is to try to change the zoning into, for our business. We are, we are located at 2717 South Redwood Road, and there was a miscommunication, I believe, there at the beginning, and so, you know, we pretty much, we had, we had our business there now, so we just hoping that we can get, we can come to an agreement with you guys to be able to get our license, proper license going, and be able to open to the public, because we were very excited to bring some business into the West Valley City. And, you know, that's, that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's come today to speak on this application? For, or against, or otherwise? Okay, seeing none, I close the public hearing regarding GPZ 3-2012, and council will turn it over to you for your discretion on what to do with ordinance 1304. Again, this is the one that amends the general plan from mixed use to commercial light manufacturing.
So I'll make a motion that on ordinance 13-04, that we move for approval with the note that we have other business that will attach a, you know, what, a design agreement with the property that will go with the property, so that it limits the manufacturing uses that will be able to happen on this property.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion with those finishes, and a second. Any discussion there?
Well, I would note, you know, I, when we discussed this in the study meeting last week, this is what I thought was the right thing to do, was to amend, to allow this particular use in this particular place. And I held in my mind a reservation, knowing that we would have a public meeting, that if a lot of people, the neighbors, came and said, "Let's not do this," that I could reconsider that, and seeing none, you know, I thought that I would be in favor of going forward with this action.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, council?
I guess I have a question.
Question to the motion on that, so, because my thoughts were, I guess the pause was along with Councilwoman Lang's, is that I want to approve this and approve all of it, but I hate to approve the first one without having the third one, and I can never tell how every, anyone's going to vote. So can, so the first motion of approving ordinance 1304 pending or regarding further action, I mean, is that a comment on that?
I'm sorry, sir, to interrupt.
No, go ahead. You're, you're along with my train of thought, which I'm having a hard time explaining, but can you have the approval of this motion be contingent on the approval of another motion?
Of, of course, and I think that that could be conditional, just as, as Councilwoman Lang has stated, she, her motion was that we would approve it with the condition that that is also approved, and I think that covers your, covers your concerns, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on 1304? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving 1304, say aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose?
Nay.
Okay, it sounds like the votes were six to one on that one. Related to that, we have 1305, and again, this is now the zoning map piece of that change, going from C2 to manufacturing.
I would move for approval of ordinance 1305 contingent upon the approval of further ordinance, limiting the manufacturing uses.
Okay, we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion there? All right, I'll call the question there. All in favor of approving ordinance 1305, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose?
Nay.
Okay, it looks like it's six to one again. And we come now to the last piece of this group, which is Resolution 1311, and this is the development agreement that was alluded to with the previous two motions. Is there any action on this one you'd like to take?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for approval of Resolution number 13-11. Second?
Thank you, both. Any discussion there for this? I'll, I'll chime in something. This is a tough situation for us. We realize there is some miscommunication, we realize that it's a, it's a good entrepreneurial group working hard, and, and our staff has been over backwards to try and figure out the best way to make it work, and, and I appreciate their efforts to put together something that can work in this unique situation, and we're pleased that we're moving this far and hope that we will see some approval here on 1311. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call the question on this one. All in favor of 1311, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, that one's unanimous. We come to, it's all principle, all right, council member? Once the other two are through, then the last one?
I think this one was appropriate based on what the other two votes were.
That's right, okay, I'm following the logic here. Okay, we come to Resolution 13, before you, just, congratulations to the applicant on that one. We know this is a tough one, and Mr. Pastrick, we appreciate you working with him as well. Okay, on to 1309, and Ms. Cottle, if you could introduce this one, please.
Resolution 1309 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the agreement for disposition of land for the ADL with Jordan River Marketplace, to approve the master plant plan being proposed by the developers and to allow for additional time for the installation of the improvements. This is, as you are aware, an agreement that we've been working on for some time and facilitating as a city for some time, and there have been some suggested changes by the applicant that are before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. And I notice we have the applicant with us in the audience, Brad Milton and Bob Murray representing a same construction, and they're here, council. If you have any questions at all, to reach out to them, and if they have anything they'd like to say, we may even give them the courtesy to, if there's any additional information they'd like to provide. So we'll kind of open up, first of all, council, to see if there's any questions here, Brad or Bob or staff, for a discussion or a motion. First of all, did you guys have anything new you wanted to add to the discussion? No, at this point?
We have a few questions.
Okay, you have a few old questions, great. So council, what's your pleasure here? We have all received the latest master plant, development plan, which our city recorder sent out to us, via electronically as well as giving us our copies in our study meeting. And you've seen that the transit connection's been added.
I just have a question, how, how each one of these, we've got several ordinances here that apply to this, so I guess I'm wondering how, how this works in order? If one's approved, one's, I mean, I guess, how do we walk through these individually?
Ms. Cottle?
Yes.
It's one resolution, is that right?
Yes. So 1309 is on the city council agenda, and if you're referring to another action with regards to that, which is 13-05 on the RDA agenda, are those the two? Okay. So the reason that they're on both, as you're aware, is because this contract is basically a three-way contract, as we've discussed before, with Selly City, the redevelopment agency, and the Jordan River Marketplace LLC. So whether you want to take them out of order, I think because you're in the council meeting for the city in order to review the other one, you need to go to the RDA meeting, so a journey as to go to the other, but they, they're the same in content.
Same content.
Absolutely, and language, yes.
I'll just make one comment. There's, as we've been through this process for quite a number of years, I'm, I'm actually to the point where I feel comfortable allowing our planning commission to, to now work with the developers and trust our planning commission to, to do a good job in making sure that this happens in a manner that will be beneficial to the city.
Okay, other comments or questions? Or a motion?
I would move to continue this to a time uncertain, to give our staff and the planning commission, if necessary, planning commission, time to, to work with them.
Okay, we have a motion to continue. Is there anyone who'd like to second that motion? Anyone? Okay, that motion bails for lack of a second. Would anyone like to make a new motion, or have other question or discussion?
You know, I've got, I've got a few notes here, and I'll share them, and maybe it'll spark some discussion, or maybe lead into a motion here, but, you know, as I look over this plan, you know, I see, and the partners we have here are great master develop, builders that have done good work all over the, all over the valley, all over the region, and got into this with high hopes and high expectations, and it was, years ago, we had the presentation on kind of this Redwood Road area, and we had Bob Springmeyer come in, and he said, "Here's what you can do with this piece, and here's kind of this piece," and then they talked about the Valley View Drive-In, and I said, "Don't you dare get any plans with the Valley View Drive-In, and let's move on." And when this piece came up, it was, you know, with, with the amount of rooftops and the market conditions and other things on, you know, the, the best we could really envision for this area would be some type of strip mall, that's kind of like some of the other strip malls in the area. And so we got into this venture of, you know, we don't want it to be a strip mall, and so we want it to be more of this special place and a destination. And, you know, as I look at this plan, it's, you know, it's, it's certainly better than the, the strip mall that Bob Springmeyer spoke about, but it certainly wasn't up to the, the ideas and the standards that I think we discussed, and we put out the requests and started receiving initial bids to come back in to, to be on the same level of, of that. And, you know, there's one criticism that you hear often on RDAs, it's that if you would've just left it alone in an RDA, a few years from now, you would've had the same project, or project in a few years, if you'd just waited for the market conditions to catch up. And as I mentioned, I think to some of you, that I think we see, we've seen some of those market conditions in, in action over the years, and some of them have been positive, and some of them have been negative. The positive ones are some of the developments that are happening just to the, to the west of it, in the Granger crossings area, and so I think it's given us a good view of what market conditions can be like. But, you know, going back when, I guess looking at this, it all comes back to just the vision of this. And, you know, so I kind of retraced what, what the vision was, I also did a little research and came up with a few articles, I guess I could share with you. In April 9th of 2008, very new to this council, it was Maria Villasenor of the Salt Lake Tribune wrote, "West Valley Dreams Up Ethnic Crossroads." And one of the quotes from Mayor Nordfeld said, "We want it to be something really significant, something that will be a destination place. We also want to create some harmony with the festival grounds and the cultural center." The proposal that was put out called for a multi-ethnic atmosphere, with shops, bazaars, museums, open-air markets, even artist residence. "I would like to see this," quote, "I would like to see this all upper end, but not necessarily cookie cutter," said Ross Olson, executive director of the Cultural Center. "Uniting the city's many cultures is a top goal of the project," said a councilman who envisions almost a mini Epcot Center. Construction could start in a year. Fast forward to 2009, it was, "Jordan River Marketplace Moves Forward." City leaders said they want to make sure the developer knows that it has, quote, "great expectations for this project." Councilman Steve Vincent said the biggest fear is that the 30-acre development at 33rd South and 1110 West with the Jordan River would look like a strip mall. "We want to avoid that at any cost," Vincent told the developers. City leaders are anxious to see designs. Later, a project architect reassured the city council during the meeting that the center of development would have a, quote, "main street feel," such as Park City. Mayor Dennis Nordfeld said he hopes that the project is extra extraordinary. "We want something special," he says, "we have great expectations for this development." Fast forwarding one more year, at 2010, the story is Cultural Marketplace Coming to West Valley City. And the story reads it, "The plan is to have a family-oriented place where visitors can spend the day eating, shopping, and using the nearby Jordan River Parkway. Plans call for benches, fountains, cultural icons from various countries," the same construction said. One idea is to build a silver 120-foot tower with a sculpture on it. Councilman Vincent said during the meetings, he wants to make sure that the businesses are not just of two cultures. He hopes to see markets and shops from various ethnic backgrounds. So, you know, I guess as I, you know, go back to this, and like I said, that, you know, it, it looks more like one than the other to me, and, and that it comes back to the vision, and it wasn't really the vision that we've got to, for right or wrong, that I signed up for and voted for to begin with. And as we've gone through different inaugurations recently with different officials, I remember Margaret Peterson, when she kind of stepped down and wished me well, and I said, "Margaret, do you have any last words of advice to an incoming council member?" And she just told me, she said, "Corey, when it comes to developing this city, you know, don't cave in, or move off of the city's standards or vision." And, you know, that's something I take into heart, and as I look back on this, I know it's been a very difficult project and a tough one, and we've had high expectations, but, you know, there's really nothing in the master plan that I see here that really warrants anything different, so, or a change of direction from the, actually going backwards in some ways from these earlier plans of 2008, 2009, and 2010, which I've shared with you. So with that, I would be inclined to, and would move to deny Resolution 1309.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, it's 1309. We have a second.
Mayor, if I'd like to make a comment and then second that motion. The, as I look at the plan, there's nothing wrong with it, and I mean that in a generous sense. Some months ago, we had the school people in here telling us they wanted the school there, and, and I mentioned at that time that I thought the school was the best piece of the project, and I was serious, and I did think that. It was the most exciting piece of the project, but in my opinion, it didn't fit. We have this project that, this is great. If this was going to be built anywhere in the city, on the developer's land, there's no reason not to go along with this project, but what I don't see is anything special or that's a destination. The idea was to bring people from all over the valley, "Oh, you gotta see this, you gotta come to West Valley, they're on the river, and the gateway to our city, and, and see this unique and exciting project," and I don't see that there. And with that, I would second the motion.
Okay, we have a light motion then, to deny 1309. Any further discussion, or questions, or comments? I'll, I'll speak up a little bit. Well, Mr. Murray's raised his.
I guess I'd like to make a comment.
Colleagues, you okay if the advocate makes a comment?
It's great to be with you, thanks for allowing us to be here tonight.
Let's see, could you state your full name and address just for our minutes?
Bob Murray, 25 South Main Street, Centerville. I guess in our, in our efforts to try to make what's right for the city, we've given so many opportunities for your input, and we didn't get it. So if, if you wanted something more, why were we not hearing from you all along? That's what I want to know. We needed your help, and we asked several times for your help. We even set up a special meeting, and not one council member attended the meeting to give us guidance on what you thought was important. I don't know why. If this was, if this was that important to the city and to the city council members, and this is supposed to be a partnership, where's the partnership? We have worked very hard to get to this point, and in West Valley City today, I don't see any development like this. So I think it is different. It is not a strip mall, and I don't think we've ever gone away from our original design, to have it be a destination place, to have it be ethnic-driven, and to have it be something special, and to have a connection with the Cultural Celebration Center. We've never moved away from that. We've always been a part of that. In fact, if you read this document, and I'm assuming that you all have, if you look on the, one of the documents says, "The Jordan River Marketplace Project is to be a mixed-use wacko development with culturally diverse shops and restaurants, office space, residential units, and cultural amenities, all within a multicultural environment. Developer entered into the ADL in 2009 and has since been working with the city and the RDA to create the development contemplated in the ADL." We've never moved away from that original design. So I don't know how you can say we've moved away from it now. We need your partnership on this, and we need your input, and we haven't received it. So I don't know how you can deny this tonight. I just don't know how you can do it in good, in good and honest conscience.
Okay, so in, in all due respect on that, you know, I've came to visioning meetings in your office, I know several of us have been, things that, that have gone to lunch together to talk about this over the years. So to say that I've never been available for it, I find offensive, because I've offered my help to this many, several, several times over the five years, and so, you know, if you want to get specific on that, I'd like to.
I didn't mean to be offensive. That's never been my intention. Never been my intention to be offensive. But there have been opportunities, several, several planning sessions where we've come in and said, "Does this look good to you? Are you happy with this? Is there anything you're uncomfortable with?" And, and we didn't get feedback. Maybe we didn't give you enough time to respond, I don't know.
Before being elected to the council, I sit in many council study sessions and council meetings, and I remember many council members giving feedback at that time, specific feedback. "I would like to see this feature, I would like to see that feature," none of which are included.
Other comments or questions?
Where's Carolyn Burt's clock tower?
What?
Where's Carolyn Burt's tower?
We designed the tower, and the city opted not to do it. We're happy to do the tower. We, we put property there for it. You saw the design, we brought them forward. I'd still love to see the tower. I think it's terrific.
Where's the Chinese gate?
Chinese gate got moved over to the Cultural Celebration.
Because you couldn't get it in?
No, that's where they elected to put it.
That's where they opted to put it.
No, that's a matter of opinion.
Well, it's a little bit, we, you know, we just got transfer of some of the property in October, and it's tough to shoot a target when it keeps changing. Originally, it started at about 35 acres, it went down to 30 acres, it's now about 17. You can't put everything you would put on 30 acres in 17. We're happy to change and do whatever you like, in a way that you like it. We want it to be a multicultural celebration area. We want the ties to the Cultural Celebration Center. That has always been our objective. That's why the hotel's there. It, it works and complements the convention aspects of the Cultural Celebration Center. That's what we, we want. We have a place for fountain there, we still have cultural celebration kinds of things, cultural icons will be throughout that promenade, that main promenade that we presented to you guys about six weeks ago. We still intend that to be a feature of the project. If there were more specific concerns that you have, or more specific directions, we'd be happy to, to be responsive to them. We do need to get them. I know, I know everybody's getting weary, and it has been, it has been a challenging piece. I mean, originally, we thought we had one property owner, it turns out we had very many, and there's a lot of, a lot of efforts to be done, and a lot of things that had to take place. They have taken place, we're ready to go. That, you know, I don't think, is there any property issues, Nicole, that's standing our way today?
I don't know, I'd have to ask our city attorney. No.
No, and so, you know, that's where we are. Those issues are now out of our way. Now the target is complete, and we know what we can shoot. We need your feedback to make it all that it can be. If you approve what we've got and give us some more feedback, we're happy to tweak what we need, or what you'd like. We don't have any opposition to that. And I'd love, Don, I'd love to have the tower come back. It wasn't us that pulled the plug on the tower. It was the city.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Any other questions or comments? I have some I own I'd like to make. I, we've all wrestled with this, because it is a difficult piece of property, and the power corridor, and the pond, and the roadways, and different things. And I actually think it's come a long ways in the last while, and it's not there yet. But it has come a long way, from even back when the charter school was a part of it. And I was hoping, I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this motion of denial and to reconsider Councilman Christensen's earlier motion of continuance. I think if there's some things we need to still work out, some feedback that still needs to be incorporated, let's continue it and really roll up our sleeves and provide that feedback and see if we can't take one last shot to really make this what we all have hoped and dreamt it could be. I think by denying it today, we sent a message that we don't want to be a partner here to the degree that we would need to be to move forward. And I think if we continue it, that leaves open, sends a better message that, hey, we still want to roll up our sleeves and work on this and see if we can't come up with something that we're all pretty excited about. Because it has come a long way, and we are balancing pretty vague hopes and dreams with market realities and property realities, and I would hate for us to throw on the top on this one.
I'll just make my comment that I made earlier, that I believe that all this fine-tuning can be done by the Planning Commission, and so, it's just a comment.
You know, Mayor, somebody said once, "I cannot define art, but I know it when I see it." And that's kind of how I feel towards the developers. I have not taken the opportunity to sit down and tell you what I want, because number one, I don't speak for the other six people here. You might plan something that I want that still doesn't fly. And, you know, I sat next to Carolyn Burt for a couple of years, and every time that she came, she grumbled and participated and said what she'd like to see there, and it is hard to pin down or define, but it needs to be something that would be a destination, a valley-wide destination. People want to come there from all over the place, because they just have to see it. They want to take their children there. They want to get their picture taken there. They want to propose there. They want to do whatever there, this is the place to be. There are some places like that. Now, that's not to copy those places. You know, people go to Temple Square from all over the world. I don't think we want to build a Temple Square. But people here in the valley go to other places because they are special, whether it's the New Mall downtown, or whether it's Lakai Restaurant, or, you know, any number of places. And that's what we, I think, want in the city, and, you know, without just repeating myself, that would be what's missing for me. It's not that I can tell you, "Put up a clock tower, put up a fountain, put up some sort of ethnic diverse..." You know, it's just, show me something that's beautiful and exciting, and I can't wait to be building, come there and watch it. I'm not a developer. I'm not a planner. I'm not an architect, and I don't have that skill set. I can't define art, but I know it when I see it. And I'm sorry, but that's the best I can do.
I want to make a comment, I want to echo what the state builder, Mr. Buehler, did mention. One thing I know, you guys, I know Bob Murray and Brad Norton, you guys working very hard on this project, and I think this, to me, is, look good right there. But one thing concerned, I really concerned about is the mixed you. You see right there, 2100 South Main Street and also 4300 South Main Street right there that is dying. It's been there for seven years, eight years, but still there. But on the other hand, you see the mixed you in Salt City, right downtown Salt City, it worked just well, it worked just great there, because they have the colors there, you know, B W U colors, B W U, and also the you there and then Mill Creek Mall there, and that worked just fine with the mixed you down there. But here, outside the city center, because that's, that area is the dense population, it worked out just fine. But the Murray area is dying. And here in West Valley City, we have Colosseum already across from the York Project is dying too, and that's I'm really concerned about, mixed you. But same thing with state builder. We've got to get something really unique place, you know what I'm saying? People that can come and can take a look at it, and that's what I'm talking for.
And I wonder if the team at the consent construction has in their minds some pretty exciting, unique things, and maybe the problem is it just hasn't been communicated as clearly to this group, and maybe you have the vision and just hasn't been shared with us.
Well, that could be.
Fair enough to get this group all excited, or...
That could be. I thought when we discussed this about six weeks ago or seven weeks ago, that I thought we were all kind of coming around to the same position so much, as my interpretation. Maybe I was wrong. I understood that, you know, we had a disappointment as well as you about the school. We thought it was a great fit, but, you know, move on. We have a fountain in the facility. We have a kind of a feature area set aside on the promenade through the main corridor of the project, and you'll see there. I love the tower. Frankly, the tower was a terrific idea. And I, we've reserved a spot on the corner as you come into the city for the city to have a monument or something there, and we'll participate with you on that. I don't know, I don't know what it's going to be yet, because we haven't got that feedback to know. But, you know, Don, if you guys want to go back to the tower, we love the tower. We absolutely love the tower. Maybe it was too big, you know. We weren't the ones that moved away from it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Any other questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Because I'm happy to talk about whatever you think. And we actually want it to be as special as you do. But sometimes if we don't understand, and I know that there's, you know, six or seven different opinions about everything we do, and it's tough to orchestrate a common chord, so to speak. But we're willing and able to do that if we can get the feedback, but, you know, and I guess, Corey, I understand your frustration, because it's been long, you know?
Well, I'm sure you're more frustrated than I am.
Yeah, there's state property that we didn't get transferred, and, you know, we had to deal with things with the county. We had to realign the road. There was wetlands, all those kinds of things that tested all our patience, you know? And, you know, we are where we are. We still would love to make that a fabulous success for West Valley City and for the Cultural Celebration Center, and to celebrate the ethnicities within the city. And we have about 13 different restaurants that want to be there. And, you know, that's a pretty interesting thing. If you can take your wife out, your friends out, go out to a place to eat and say, "Oh, gosh, you know, where are we going to go?" There's the smorgasbord. That is a terrific thing. Where else can you do that? That is a neat thing. If there are bronze statues that represent each of these different ethnicities that are represented in the project along the promenade, which is what we talked about last time, that creates someone that you can come and take pictures with, that you can come and show your kids, and you can talk about, you can see, touch and feel. And if there are other things that you like, we're happy to talk about that or change what we need to. We've got, you know, places for picnic along the one end up towards the future River Parkway or River Park. I don't know what you can call it. You know, we have the hotel that's set up to be close to where it can draw on the convention aspects of the Cultural Celebration Center. And the synergy of those two things is very positive, and Ross likes that a lot. You could ask him now how he feels about that. He does, he's looking forward to it. It's going to make him more successful. It's going to make that less of a burden to the city, too, because it's going to make it more financially viable. There's a lot of good things about it. But that's, but we are where we are, and we don't have the 35 acre we started, or the 30 acres that you talked about in 2008, or, you know, the realigned road and the wetlands and all the other issues. We're down to 17. And, you know, we can't, we can't erase the power corridor. It does happen to go through the middle of it. We all have to figure out how to work with that and make it a good thing.
If I may, Mayor?
Please.
I know my perception, and neither my perception nor my experience is perfect or probably representative of the rest of the group, but we've had developers come in several times and try to find out what the council wants. And then we end up with a plan that's a hodgepodge of why I got to put this in for Councilman Vincent, I got to put this in for Councilman Christensen, and it's just like, what are we doing? Because we're, I, from my perspective, my feeling, I'm not a designer, I'm not a planner, and it always seems to me that when we turn these people loose that do this professionally and have done it 100 times before, they come back with a better plan. And I hesitate to send you back to the drawing room to, oh, we got to put in a clock tower now, or we got to do this or that, because in my perspective, that's not the issue. The issue is making it a beautiful, special destination place, and maybe we're just not seeing enough here. I'm not seeing the bronze statues, and I'm not seeing the storefronts, and I'm not seeing how it's better than any place else in the valley.
And I'm not seeing 13 restaurants on the plan either.
Well, you see where they sit. They sit along that promenade on both sides.
Right, but to Councilman Buehler's point, I mean, it's not necessarily this or that or the other. It just kind of comes down to, you know, does this plan or the work since we've started this, 2008, this point, is it time to, you know, give us enough cause to change or amend the agreement? And, you know, my thoughts are different from your thoughts or anybody else's, and we can sit here and talk about it all day, because reasonable people can have differing opinions on whether this is special or not, or if a bronze statue would make it special or not. But I think it just comes down to, you know, is the vision there? And is the vision there that, you know, we're moving forward and not backwards and to a place that, you know, warrants us executing amendments to an already tricky and complicated agreement?
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just make another comment. You know, as I look at this, you know, and of course Corey quoted me quite a bit there in his... And again, I look at, I look at this, and I look at this promenade, I guess in, when I vision walking down this promenade, it does reflect a lot of those photographs that we had in the original document that showed a promenade with storefronts on both sides and people sitting out in their chairs and tables eating on the promenade and, you know, the flags out on the promenade. So I do see a lot of that in this piece that they could develop, which is the eastern part, and, you know, the western part, I think, still needs some work. But I think, when I think back at those photographs that they put together in the packet that they gave to all the developers to kind of, this is what we want, I can envision that as I, as I kind of try and stroll down this promenade that they have here with all these restaurants and shops fronting that with flags of their countries and tables decorated with traditional country decorations. So I can kind of envision that happening here. And that's why I'm okay allowing the Planning Commission to work on the finer details.
That's not what we're debating at this point, right?
Well, in a way we are, though, because if, once you approve the plant, the master plan, all these buildings are going to be tweaked a little bit based on as a tenant comes in. One tenant may come in and say, you know, "We need a little bit larger space," or "A little bit smaller," and it's going to tweak the plan, and that'll go through the Planning Commission, as Councilmember Vincent alluded to. Or one of these buildings may, maybe it holds five little restaurants, kind of, there's, I don't know, in the ethnic community, a lot of microeateries have expressed interest, kind of smaller groups. And so, yeah, it's going to evolve as it goes with the Plan Commission. What we're voting on today is, are we comfortable with this plan at this stage as kind of the baseline to move forward? And as part of that, do we give another year? And it's staff more than be just September 15th of this year to begin to make it happen. And so I would again encourage you to vote against the motion on the floor, which is to deny this, and then let's discuss it some further. Any other discussion to this motion? Karen?
I would be a lot more comfortable with this amendment if it did not attach a master plan with it, if it was just an extension, but not approving a master plan as part of it. So as the amendment or the resolution is written, I would vote against it, just because I don't like those two things attached together. If we, you know, this master plan is the solution to everything, instead of just giving a one-year extension. Excuse me.
And by the way, we have a light motion right now, but should that fail, there is opportunity for someone to make a motion to that effect, to amend the...
Well, I would rather come back as a different amendment than try to change this. I would rather deny this and then come back with a different approach, separating the two.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay, the motion on the floor right now is to deny ordinance, let's see, the ordinance to a resolution on this one?
Resolution.
Resolution, 1309. And Ms. McKenick, let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mayor Winder?
Nay. The ice have it five to two, and so 1309 is denied. Just a question for staff, that does, just because this was denied today, doesn't preclude a send from bringing back any future proposals or... What does it mean for them from this stage?
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. As you're aware, we have a current and existing contract in place, which has an exhibit attached to it already with a site plan. As you're aware, it's from the initial execution of the document, so they work under that existing contract and certainly would not be precluded from making another motion before the council for a different...
Okay, thank you. We go to item 1310 this evening. Ms. Connell, if you could introduce that resolution, please.
This is, I don't know, can I get the microphone straight? 1310 is a resolution authorizing the execution and recording of a delay agreement with Levi Card for improvements on 2555 South Fargo Street, which is about 1360 West Fargo Street is. This is something that would normally be on your consent agenda, but because we only have one item of this sort tonight, we put it on here just under a regular resolution. So very similar to all the other delay agreements we have, this is a location where we don't have these improvements. Wouldn't make sense to have one home have those improvements when the rest of the street does not. So we delay it until such times they cannot be put in.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on 1310?
Move for approval of 1310?
Any discussion? All of them, they say aye?
Aye.
That one passes unanimously. Any need for executive session today, anyone? Okay, then we come to item 10, which is to adjourn our regular meeting, and then we'll head into our RDA special meeting.
Called to order the RDA special meeting. Note that roll call has been taken and all members are present, and we have had an opening ceremony. Move to resolution 13-05. Ms. Connell?
Thank you, sir. 1305 is the sister resolution to the resolution we just discussed in the city council meeting. This is an authorization to execute the second amendment to the ADL between the city, the redevelopment agency, and the Jordan River Marketplace.
Thank you. Here's your motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we deny 1305, not because I'm necessarily opposed to it, but because it doesn't add some legal complications and muddies the waters if the city council and the RDA are not in agreement on this three-way agreement. So, so move to deny.
I'll second.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, and let's do this one roll call also.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Winder?
Aye.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye, thank you.
Chairman Christensen?
Aye. Five to two, right?
Six to one.
Six to one. Six to one, okay. So it is denied. Saying no further business for the RDA, we will adjourn. We will adjourn.